Live and recording.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Thank you, John. Welcome, everyone, to a regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at the Veterans Memorial Building, 6 o'clock in Morro Bay. Very nice to have you all here with us, and those on the Zoom, welcome as well. And let me quickly introduce the commissioners. I'm going to start with our newest commissioner. Very nice to have Eric Meyer with us. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have Mike Rodriguez on the end, Joe Ingraffia, and Asia King is now a new termed commissioner, so welcome back. My name is Bill Roshan. We are all volunteers and very happy to be here, so thank you all for coming. If we could start, we've established a quorum, and a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and a pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any planning commissioner announcements? Hearing none, our first item is the election of a chair and a vice chair. And if there's any discussion or nominations, I would entertain those.
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination chair. Excuse me, I already let the cat out of the bag. I just want to thank Chair Roshan for serving as a vice chair during the last terms, and I'd like to nominate him as now the chair of the Planning Commission.
Ah, thanks, Mike. Thank you.
And I would like to nominate Mike Rodriguez.
Yeah, perfect.
And nominate Mike Rodriguez as co-chair or vice chair, or whatever that secondary position is.
Great. Do I have a second?
You want a second? I'll second it if no one else wants.
Thank you, Asia. By the way, everybody, Scott Graham is not in Hawaii or anywhere, he's homesick. So he will be with us by Zoom, and so if there are questions for him, we can ask. Nancy, would you call the role?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
And I guess new chair, Roshan.
Thank you very much, yes. So let's get into the meeting. Before we start, Eric, would you want to give us 60 seconds and just introduce yourself to everyone? Thanks.
Hello, I'm Eric Meyer. I was born here in Morro Bay. I went to Morro Bay Elementary, Morro Bay High, Questa, Cal Poly, promptly left, made the business, sold the business, promptly moved back to San Luis Obispo. I was in San Luis for the last 20 years. And I was a city planning commissioner in the city of San Luis for one term, and I was a county planning commissioner in the county of San Luis for one term. We moved back to Morro Bay in 2017. I bought a house here, and then last year, a year and a half ago, we moved back.
And welcome. We're really happy to have you, so. Let's see, first item would be public comment. It's very gracious, the way this commission has the tradition of welcoming anyone who wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. But if you can't stay with us for the whole meeting, which we hope you can, you're welcome to come up now and have your comments before the agenda item. John, Nate, do we have anybody in the queue who wants to speak?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who'd like to come up? Oh, good, Betty.
Betty Winholz, is it on? Okay. Betty Winholz, welcome, Mr. Myers. I am asking when the minutes for the Planning Commission could be updated on the website. The last minutes that are posted are from September, so it's about five going on six months delayed. And it's helpful doing research to have those.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that comment, too. Nancy, is that something you can relay to Scott? I'm sure he's hearing. Scott, is that, did you hear all that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we do have more recent minutes for you guys to review. We just didn't have the ability to get them on this agenda, so there'll probably be a couple of sets on the next one.
Great, thanks. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Bill Martini, and congratulations on the new planning commissioners. I wanted to, I noticed later on you have, as far as discussing the historical buildings in Morro Bay, so I'll bring up comments at that time. I had one quick comment for Scott and that, or maybe someone on the Planning Commission, and that is a question on the battery plant proposal. I've heard two different versions on the square footage of the buildings proposed. When I attended Vistra, they said the square footage was about 100,000 for the battery, you know, for the actual buildings. I've also heard that it was the equivalent of three, I think it was Costcos. And Costcos go anywhere from 80,000 to a quarter million square feet. They're talking 23 acres. Are they talking 700-plus thousand square feet of building footprint, which is approximately 15 acres? Or are they talking 100,000 square foot for the, you know, the footprint? Because if it's 100,000 square feet, if there has to be an alternate location, that's fairly easy to accommodate. But in either respect, to find out what the true square footage on the proposal is, because there's such a discrepancy between the two.
Got you, Bill. Thanks.
Secondly, I wanted to bring up, I know later is the historical comments, but Morro Bay actually owns a piece of property where they're discussing a mega hotel right now. And that is the Marketplace Plaza. Originally, that was a Breakers. It was a Breakers Dinner House. It was built by Harry Amstall, and it was built in 1957. If you're talking a historical building, the city actually owns it. This would be one of the iconic buildings on the Embarcadero, one of the few left that haven't been bulldozed or that. The other thing is, back in the '40s, there was a person that was flying, it was famous in the time flying tigers. They flew over the hump if you were interested in World War II history. The person also owned a restaurant there. So from a historical, you know, he has Flying Tiger Airlines, and he actually at one time had the Hungry Tiger Restaurant there. So I'm just saying, if the city wants to save historical buildings rather than destroying it, maybe that's one to really think about. The other half of the puzzle was, the city owned that property originally. There was an RV park, where the parking lot is now, and the city closed down that RV park. So if you're talking affordable housing or workforce housing, the city is probably guilty, and I don't even know if that was legal at the time, to actually abandon that RV park where the current parking lot on the Embarcadero is. And you might check into whether that needs to be restored or, you know, something that would be less for workforce housing or that. So I just thought I'd bring up just a comment. I know later on we'll talk in depth about it.
Thank you, Bill. Hearing no one else, ready to speak? Tell us your name, if you would, please.
Yeah, it's Bill Todd. I own Todd's Garage. I'm a Morro Bay resident now for 32 years. I'm not sure if the right venue to bring this up, but I think you guys all know that Quintana Road, south of the traffic circle, has been under construction for, I don't know, two years. It's just been insane, and we've been dealing with that. And so they finally, today, finished paving it, so yahoo, finally got it done. But there is a problem with that street that has been just a thorn in our side ever since we opened that shop 23 years ago. And that is, there's a storm drain north of us that all of King's water, the street above us, comes down. And when that storm drain plugs up, we get an eight-foot-wide river of water coming in front of our shop, and that's how we know that storm drain's plugged up. When you see the traffic circles underwater, it's because that storm drain is plugged up. And so when that happens, all the water backs up and starts degrading the properties north of us, and all the gravel and sand and debris all go right in front of our shop, and the water comes over our curb, comes into our shop. And I just don't know if this is the right venue, but I really wish somebody would look at that. I know I've spoken with a couple of the planners that are building the road, and they seem to kind of like, it's not my job kind of thing. And I really think it needs to be addressed.
Great.
So, thank you so much.
Scott, can you respond to that at all, that comment?
Sure, Chair Roshan. I'll definitely bring the concern that was raised to the attention of our Public Works Director, Greg Qualick, and his folks, so they take a look at it so that they're aware, if they're not otherwise aware of it.
Great. Thanks for the update. Let's move into the consent calendar. Scott, do we have anything on the consent calendar tonight?
It's the project tracking log. It's a receive and file. So if there's questions, you could ask them. If not, you can just receive and file.
Any questions, commissioners? Do we need a vote on that?
You don't. You can just agree to receive and file. There's nothing to vote on.
One more time. Was that a yes or a no?
You don't need to vote on it, no.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to go first into our public hearing, which is case number CDP 22025. The site location is 2440 Laurel Avenue. And Nancy, can we start with you for the staff presentation?
I think that's a good idea. Okay, so this is the appeal of the administrative approval of coastal development permit 22-025 for the proposed new home at 2440 Laurel Avenue. This is the proposed project. The lower left shows the existing home on the site and the surrounding development. And the image inset at the top right shows the proposed home. Immediate neighborhood context, this gives you an idea of what is going on around this home. And the star on the roof is indicating the location of the subject property. So the first image on the top left is east of this home. So these are the homes that look like single stories from Nutmeg. They're on the west side of Nutmeg. But as you can see from the back, that they are stair-stepped down the hill. And although some of them may not be three stories, they certainly could be three stories based on the elevation change. The slope in that area varies, but it can range as high as 20% to 23% slope. The image on the right top is north of the property, so this is the next-door neighbor's home. And this image kind of shows down the property line between the homes that are on the west side of Nutmeg and the homes on the east side of Laurel. And you can see that the setbacks are about five feet on a lot of the homes. Same with the image below. This is again just a view between the homes that kind of shows what the backyards look like. And, you know, maybe the homes on the east side of Laurel aren't going to spend a lot of time in their backyards because it's imposing with the three-story or the three-story-looking structures above them. So there may be little backyard space use in this area because it really is all about the view west and south. The appeal had stated grounds for appeal, and the first stated ground is the demo permit did not require an asbestos report. And the staff response is that the demo and building permits have not been issued. But when they are, they will include the California requirement for identification, remediation, and safe removal. Stated grounds for appeal number two and number three. The appellant's statement, which is, I'm paraphrasing, lists the following complaints related to the residential design guidelines. Proposed home is not compatible with the neighborhood. The height is a problem. Mass and scale. Placement on the parcel. Bad design, ugly roof. Privacy concerns. Solar panels tacked on three levels, which is not done on the east side of Laurel. Grounds for appeal two and three, this is an excerpt from the residential design guidelines that state the guidelines are not intended to encompass the entire range of design possibilities, but instead meant to provide basic guidance as to what is expected when development is proposed. The policies are not meant to discourage innovative designs nor encourage any specific style or design concept. This is an image of the neighborhood as defined by the residential design guidelines. This is a 500-foot radius around the subject property. So you can see this encompasses a larger area than what the appellant is considering in her appeal as the immediate neighborhood. Neighborhood compatibility. So there's a wide range of architectural styles in this neighborhood. And actually, in the top-left photo, the left house, you can see has a mansard roof. Most homes are designed with two, three, and one, I found, is even four levels, stair-stepped with the slope of the property. And they're all within the design guidelines. So depending on the slope and the design of the house, people can maximize what they can obtain within those parameters. Or they can have a two-story home with a vaulted ceiling. But it doesn't mean that the homes aren't the same height, and they all are adhering to the same development standards, height, setback, and so forth. So this is an image of the neighborhood, and the orange stars are all the three-story homes. This is again the smaller area that the appellant wanted to focus on. And it shows about in the center is the subject property. So two doors down one way and three doors down the other way. On the east side of Laurel, there are three-story homes. I couldn't tell on the homes that are on the west side of Nutmeg because you frankly can't get a good look at the back of them other than the one photo that shows the back of them because the subject property is currently a single-story home, so you can see. But. Grounds two and three, addressing height, mass, and scale. The homes in the zoning district are subject to the same development standards. There is no special rule for homes on the east side of Laurel. The zoning code provides the same development opportunity to all the properties in that area. The proposed home design meets the development standards, including the setbacks and the height. Within the constraints of meeting these standards, the designers should be able to design a home suitable for the owner. Mass and scale. Again, this is photos of properties that are in the subject neighborhood. The excerpt from the design guidelines is the proposed new project should be consistent with the overall pattern of perceived scale and mass in the surrounding neighborhood. So that's not comparing square footage. It's comparing perceived scale and mass. So what you can see, what it looks like compared to the other homes. And you can see on here, these homes, there are a few two-story homes, but there are a bulk of three-story homes, and maybe even one three-and-a-half story. The top-left photo, of course, is the photo simulation of the proposed home. This is another view of homes surrounding the subject property that gives you an idea of the scale, how they kind of stair-step down to the south as well as stair-step down to the west. This is an image of the immediate neighborhood between Nutmeg, Laurel, and Casitas. And this shows the site plan imposed on the subject lot that shows in the blue square the outline of the house positioned on the parcel. So the existing home, the single-story home, has a five-foot rear setback now. The proposed home is meeting that setback as well. More than 50% of the homes in this image have a larger footprint on the parcel than the subject home. Grounds two and three, privacy and solar. From the residential design guidelines regarding privacy. Windows, doors, balconies shall be placed to minimize views into the adjacent home living areas. So in the design guidelines, what the images show is walls that are facing each other. In this case, the objection is for recessed windows on the south-facing wall of the proposed home. So in the image on the bottom, you can see the two recessed windows. The top one is recessed, set back from the exterior face of the home, four and a half feet with a balcony. The lower one is recessed nine feet with a balcony. The balcony rail is flush with the outside face of the wall. It's south-facing. The appellant's objection is for a west-facing wall or west-facing window on her home. So diagonally, the two homes are 23 feet apart. But to look directly into someone's window, you would really have to come out and lean over the balcony and look to the east. And so the residential design guidelines, it's impractical to think that you can remove every possible angle of seeing someone else's home has windows. And the applicant of the proposed home is doing opaque windows. So still on grounds two and three, height and surface articulation. So the surface articulation is through upper-level stepped-back from the front face and the use of belly bands to break up the larger wall surfaces on the side. The residential design guidelines really don't address the side and the back of the building, but in practice, the planning staff has looked at those elevations and added something. So in this case, the architect did not really want to add the belly bands, but that was something that we wanted to break up the larger face of the side walls. The front staff has frequently accepted a two-foot setback to meet the design guidelines. In this case, we have a six-foot setback on the middle level, and the top level is 12-foot setback from the front face of the garage wall. And then, hard to read here unless you stand up and go look real close at that image, but the green line on the left side is the determination of the 25-foot height requirement. It is determined from average natural grade, which is the highest point and the lowest point around the proposed foundation. And you average those two, and you have a new line, and you measure up from that line. And 25 feet is the standard, and that has been the standard since probably 1967. And all of the projects that come in, in this neighborhood, have to meet that same standard.
So just go through that one more time for everybody, a tiny bit slower, because that's, everybody needs to sort of understand that.
Yes, okay, so I don't have a pointer or anything, but there's like a red indication on the left side of the wall, and that is, I think that is the, that is the high point. So you look at the site, you determine where you're placing your foundation, and you take the highest point of elevation and the lowest point of elevation, and then you average those two numbers. And that gives you your average natural grade. And that is how you determine how high you can go. You can go 25 feet from that number.
Yeah, so the 25 feet, which is the limit, is measured from that point.
Yes.
The front then could and would be bigger.
Yes, and the back would be less.
Right.
And depending on how severe your slope is, that could be more or less exaggerated.
Nancy, can I clarify something? So when submitted the plans, the architect submits that number, and then you verify that? I mean.
Yes, actually, and that's required to be on a survey.
Okay, good.
And it's required to be stamped by a licensed engineer. It's also required to be verified on-site during construction before they start framing because we don't want to discover that there was a mistake when they framed. So the foundation certificate includes another visit by the surveyor to confirm the elevation.
Good, yeah, because when I was out there today for 45 minutes, I mean, just the slopes of the three different streets, I mean, you've got to really get that right on.
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you.
Grounds two and three, height and surface articulation. This is just, kind of just what Chair Roshan talked about is if you look at, the average natural grade is 25 feet, or you can go 25 feet above that for the total height, but you can have a wall that's 28.75. And you can have the rear wall at the five-foot setback, it's 18. And actually, this, they're two different measures. One is the wall, so not including the roof, because that is a standard in the zoning code that you cannot have a wall face that's 30 feet or more. So for slope homes, that's another criteria that they have to meet. In this case, this meets that. And then just for height purposes, I wanted to show the total height to the top of the mansard roof at the back, from the ground level to the top of the roof is 18 and a half feet. And this shows the average natural grade is the red dotted line across the bottom. So what we haven't talked about, but a lot of the public comment was about private views and about fear of losing their views. And the city does not protect private views. The zoning code is designed to provide all the homes in that neighborhood or any new neighborhood with the same development rights so that like stadium seating, that's why I have this photo, everyone has the same opportunity to see the field. So also like stadium seating, sometimes there's a short person sitting right behind the tall man with the big head. That can also happen in hillside development. But all homes have the same development opportunity. So some of the homes were designed mostly on the west side of the streets. They were designed low. I don't know why, but they have some of the crazy driveways you've seen, and the homes are below grade. But I can almost guarantee you that if those homes were sold and someone redeveloped, that would no longer be the case. That they would be back at the other elevation that other homes are where the driveway comes straight into the home, and the home would be like a single-story home on the west side of Nutmeg, but like a three-story home on the west side of that property. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the administrative approval and issuance of the coastal development permit 22-025 pursuant to Planning Commission Resolution 04-23.
Before you finish your report, could you tell us a little bit how lot coverage is measured?
Lot coverage is, with this house, it's pretty easy because it's pretty compact, but it's complicated. But it's almost, other than the eaves, the eaves are not counted towards lot coverage, but it's almost the surfaces that would keep rain from falling straight down to the earth. That's not 100% always true. You could have a balcony on the second floor over the driveway, and if it's not a covered balcony, it won't count unless it's in the setback. There's a lot of caveats.
Got it.
But generally, if the sun is shining or the rain is falling, and it's not going through a surface, that's probably.
And in this case, it actually is pretty easy because it's a very simple rectum.
Yes.
And for our benefit, can you?
And for our benefit, can you, I have it in my records, but can you give me that number, what that lot coverage was in compare, you know, comparing to the rest of the neighborhood?
Well, I think most of the homes in that area maximize their lot coverage.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is what was that lot coverage? Because when I visited, I saw that there were some big homes there.
Oh, I have to go back to the original permit. Forty-eight percent, maximum is 50.
Okay. And just to clarify, the cantilevered rear section, where the second-story cantilever is over, a subterranean, small subterranean area, that cantilever is additionally included in...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just to clarify.
It's sitting on the ground.
Okay. So right now, let's go ahead and go around. The commissioners, Joe, I'd like to start with you. Do you have any questions for Nancy?
I do. First off, just an excellent presentation. Your presentations are always excellent, but this one was particularly thorough. And I might add, it's given me some thought right now, and I might admit, annihilated a few of my arguments. But I do have a couple of questions. So to repeat, all the windows on the south facade will be opaque?
We can ask the property owner, but I believe both the bedroom, the recessed bedroom and the recessed spa windows are planned to be opaque.
So what does that mean, opaque?
It's frosted, not mirrored.
Frosted. So you can't...
Frosted is a form of...
So opaque in this case, it's frosted, so you can't see in, but you also can't see out?
I think it doesn't take 100% of the view. It's like the sun shades, where you can order them in different percentages.
We can clarify with the owner, the applicant.
And that frankly isn't a requirement of the city. They could have clear glass windows, because none of their windows line up and look directly into another window. And they don't have any windows on the east side.
So the western facade of the proposed building, I think you said it would be 30 feet to the top of the mansard roof?
No, I said that the side wall, where there was a solid wall, was 28.75, so it...
And then the mansard roof on top of that?
Yeah.
Would be about 30 or perhaps 31, something like that?
It could be.
The more difficult question, and you probably don't, do you have any idea if that 31 feet is taller than the majority of the houses on that block of Laurel? Do you have any way of knowing? Because having visited, I thought most of the houses, the western facade, was probably considerably less than 32 or 33.
Unless you're thinking of the western facade of the downhill homes.
No, no.
Then I think they're probably greater than 30 or 31.
No, I'm only thinking of the western facade of the eastern side of Laurel.
My impression is some, well, my impression, I don't have any factual data, but my impression is some of the houses appear much larger in scale and mass from the street. And part of that is because they are right on the front of the street, and because they are set back to setback on the side.
Okay. And then, I couldn't quite follow. In the proposed plan, one of the balconies, or half the balcony space, will be added to the, not will be, is part of the square footage living space of the house, or is any of the balcony included? Is any of the balcony space included in what is the 3,000 or so square feet of the house?
No.
The balconies are not included in that?
No.
Okay. And then, with respect to the garage, which is quite large, I saw several fairly large storage areas, and a bathroom on the garage. Is that square footage part of the 3,000 square foot?
That's unconditioned space.
That means just not included in the 3,000?
That's included in the garage space.
But not the 3,000 that was indicated as the space? And my can't deliver question has been asked, so those are the questions I have.
Asia.
Yeah, thank you. I had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, do a lot of digging, and ask Nancy questions beforehand, so my only question right now is, what are belly bands?
They are, I guess, an embellishment that's added to the side of the building, so that you just don't have a big stark face. So the, yeah, horizontal elements under the windows at the top, and then another one before you get to the retaining wall.
Okay, that's what I was...
It just adds a shadow line and a little distinction to the...
Okay.
...face of the wall.
Thanks. I didn't know if we saw a rendering of that, or...
You know, I should ask the commissioners before we go too much further, if we've had any ex parte communication?
Oh.
With the applicant, with the appellant or the applicant?
Yes, I have had ex parte communications with the appellant.
Okay.
Same.
Same?
As well.
Okay.
I have also had ex parte communications with the appellant.
No, I didn't. I have spoken to her over the phone, so four of us have.
Okay.
Yeah. Eric.
My questions are mostly revolving on the various heights. And as I look at the, I'm looking at page from the applicant's plan, page A 6.11, but you don't need to pull it up. It's essentially a slice through the house, a section, and it shows the overall interior heights of the various floors, and then the plate lines and the floor of the garage. The floor of the garage is at 54 feet, and the top of the mansard is at 85.3. And so that gives us 31.3 as a total, which is above the 30-foot, that's talked about within the guidelines, but that, just bear with me, sorry. The front of the roof, actually, the front port is within, is the 30 feet, the lower part of the mansard that is in the front. Am I misunderstanding?
It's a solid face of a wall, so that means continuous, with no, nothing going in or out. So the front is not part of that calculation, because the front has balconies, so there's relief. They've set back.
Okay.
So it's solid face of a wall.
The posts are considered architectural protections.
So the tallest measurement is the one that I provided in this slide.
Twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I think that's been the misunderstanding on this project in general. And then just again, the rear elevation looks like, I think you said, 19 and a half feet?
Eighteen and a half.
Eighteen and a half feet.
And that's from the ground at the back of the building to the top of the mansard roof.
Okay. That's all for now.
Thanks, Eric. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Nancy for putting together a great report. One of the concerns of the appellant was that they would not have enough time to present their information to us after reviewing your report and going out there for an hour. I knew that I would have the information I needed. So, but I want to clarify this. With this proposal, all the moral-based design guidelines and standards for the development for a residential home have been met for this proposal.
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
And that includes height?
Yes.
That includes lot coverage?
Yes.
And you can't measure massing and scale, but the massing and scale is consistent with what's there?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Great. I think at this point, I'd like to invite the appellant up, and I'd like to give both the appellant and the applicant five minutes for their opening remarks, and if there's further discussion, we'll allow for more time.
Can I clarify too, Commissioner?
Sure.
One of the concerns was that the appellant wouldn't have the time to present their information, so if possible, if we've already given or gotten information that's relevant, we don't need to hear it again, because that happens a lot, right? Where you're going to get the same stuff over and over. So if we could minimize that, that would be great.
Yeah, well, we're giving them five minutes, and then if we need more time, we can do that.
Thank you.
Great. Can I invite you up? If you would, nice to have you here. If you could introduce yourself?
Yeah.
And we love models.
Yes.
My name's Tina Metzger. Kind of catty-corner above the proposed project. I want to say that the applicant has always been very helpful and welcoming in any questions I have, or the neighbors. There was a question, you said something about a 28-foot height, what was that? Can you answer that?
It's on the screen. It's just the, someone had asked what some of the heights were, and we always look at the, a continuous wall height, because there's a restriction that it can't be more than 30 feet. So that's from bottom of the roof to the ground level, and that's 28.75 feet.
Okay, you're not counting the mansard or the...
Not for that calculation. There is no city standard that would measure from the ground all the way up to the mansard.
Okay. All right. Well, I just thought it'd be a good idea to make a model. And this is, I actually made these things decades ago, when I worked at RRM and other places. The scale is one-fourth inch equals one foot. So the proposed project will be a light gray, according to the applicant, and the mansard roof will be a little bit darker. And so when I looked at these drawings on November 28th for this project, I was really disappointed, because this is my view, right here. And it's right in my view shed. The south elevation with the array, this is what I will be looking at the rest of my life, when I open my curtains in the morning. So I looked at the rest of the drawings, and I decided that I'll have to appeal this. I didn't want to. I like my neighbor. I want him to build his dream home, but I can't tolerate this. So I did a lot of research and found that the residential design guidelines speak very well for the issues that I had. And what I'm hearing tonight is that the residential guidelines don't matter that much. And in my appeal, I outlined very, every detail of what the residential design guidelines speak to and how this fails. So I wrote a letter today in my response to the city's staff report, and I disagree with many things, many issues that the city staff has written, but I feel like we have to have solutions. I'm solution-oriented, and I want the applicant to get on with this project, and I also want my neighbors to be happy with this project, and myself. And so after really thinking about everything, I decided, okay, I'm just going to talk about the different elevations and the issues, and the really, really important issues of my neighbors and me. And you have all those things in my response. And out of respect to the applicant, and out of respect to the planner, I have come up with some solutions, or here's some solutions we can try. And I'd like to have the planning commission speak about them, and maybe the applicant.
Great. Thank you.
We have a profile here, and it's really boxy. Is this the end of five minutes?
Yes.
Why don't you, that was a great spot to end. We're going to invite you back up. Let's hear from the applicant, and that way we can start, we can get public comment, and then we can go into detail. Would that work for you?
Sure. I think it would be helpful to everybody. So, okay, very good.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
So let me invite up the applicant. We are, but we're going to do it later, so we can kind of work it through.
Hi, I'm Michael Murphy. I just, quick question, did any of you get to read the letter that I had sent? Good, okay, then we'll get to know who I...
We all did, yes.
Something I've been working on for quite some time, and there was a lot of changes made by the city that I wasn't totally happy about, but I went ahead and made a lot of changes the architect and engineer made, codes that were required. So if you can, Mike? Pretty much the discussion here is about the size of the structure. The structure is, I've spent a lot of extra money to grade, bring it down under, to the bottom grade. I'm handicapped, and I don't know at what point, but I want to have a flat driveway. I'm going to have an elevator in there and stuff like that. So the front of the structure seems like it's very large, but if you, three doors up from me and two doors down, I believe, you find the same-sized structures is what I'm putting in. The question that you had was the utilization of the lot, and it allows 50%, and I'm using 48% of it. And then, when I designed the structure, I also shifted it to the north, because I was looking at the houses behind me. And as said earlier, the lots are stair-stepped up above, and they're also on Laurel stair-stepped. So Tina's house is actually one of the lower houses. I don't even know if it's built to full height, but looking at that, I thought, well, okay, I can shift that house over, and that will give her more of a view from what, and we don't see it here tonight, but I had drone footage, I put up poles to figure out the height. I didn't have to, but I did it, because I want to know too. And so I was able to verify the poles with the drone to make sure that the height that we were talking about was correct.
So you do have pictures of the poles you put up?
There actually, there were some pole pictures here that were shown earlier.
All right, thanks.
So you have those to view if you need to. But to me, it doesn't give you a lot of information, you know? It's not, and when I talk with Tina, I go, I can't tell you this, because I don't know, I'm not going to say something that I don't know isn't factual. But I do know that she's not going to lose her ocean view. And that's important, because that's why we're all here. And I, you know, in the back of the house, a couple of things were brought up, I'll sit real quick, and then I'll sit down. I didn't put any balconies on the back of the structure, because I wanted everyone to have their deck privacy. I didn't put any windows back there, because I wanted to have deck privacy. The sliders for the patio are inset, and it's very hard to see in there. But I've also mentioned to the city, and if they tell me no, then I'm going to probably put up a bamboo curtain that gives the neighbors their due privacy. And then down below, I have a therapy tub. I have a lot of busted-up bones in my body. I used to be a fireman, but a jacuzzi's going to go out there in the lower deck to soak in. And I want privacy just as much as they want privacy, so I'm going to make sure that that's taken care of. Patio slider is clear glass. The rest of the house will be rain glass, and I checked it all out. I can order rain glass for everything, with the exception of one window, and that's the window on the west, western, west-south side. And that is because the kitchen, looking through that window, I can see the rock in the bay. But then, other than that, all the office windows, all the bathroom windows, even my kitchen window, will be rain glass, so it gives the neighbors as much privacy as possible. When I designed the house, I made sure that I wasn't putting any windows that were looking into other people's windows. A lot of thought was given to this thing.
Nice.
There's only so much I can do on that.
And can you just, real quick, what is rain glass?
Rain glass? Rain glass, you normally typically see it like in showers and things like that, but it's a beautiful glass, and it looks like there's rainwater going down it, but you can't see in or out, it just allows light in.
Okay, great. Michael, thank you. Now I'd like to do public comment and invite anybody who would like to speak. I encourage everybody to try to keep it to a couple of minutes, and do your best not to repeat what others have said, just show your support. But please, come up and introduce yourself, and we'd love to hear from you.
Bill Todd again, and thank you commissioners for listening to this. I live on Nutmeg, and I am an angry nutmaker. And I know that term probably comes from us on Nutmeg Avenue buying a home on the highest street in Morro Bay so that we have commanding views of the bay and the ocean. And so, a lot of the people that live up on Nutmeg bought that home because it's on the highest street in Morro Bay, and we have these incredible views. And the thought that somebody could build a three-story home in front of my property, we, I am one of the lower properties on West Nutmeg. We're at 23, so we're about four stories down from Tina. So, my concern is if they can build this home, which to me doesn't look like it matches the architect of the other homes in the area, there are some homes that are of the same height, but they aren't boxy like that. They're, you know, they have canted roofs, and they just, they just don't have the same architecture as the home that I'm seeing. But my main concern obviously is just the height limits, and I think that the applicant could possibly move the home further towards Laurel and bring that height of that home down to an acceptable level where it's not blocking the view, and the same with any of those homes. But if you look at all the homes on West Laurel down from the applicant's home, they're all two-story homes, and the homes above them are enjoying this commanding view. And I know it's not guaranteed to us, but all of the people on Nutmeg bought on Nutmeg because we wanted that view. And so, it just seems a shame that it can be taken away from us like that.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Could you put two minutes on the clock, Nancy, for everybody?
Two minutes? Okay. Ron Smith, I'm a neighbor in Nutmeg, and first of all, I want to thank the applicant for meeting with us before the submission to the planning, or submission for the plans, and I appreciate that. I have a couple comments. One is, you mentioned about the bulk, and that's really what I'm concerned about. And if you look at the front, I think it was also one of the diagrams, even though it's articulated according to the document, if you look at, the deck extends out to the plane of the garage, and the roof extends out to the plan of the garage. So if you're looking at it face-on, it looks very flat. So that's my, that's the concern about, even though it says technically articulated from a floor plan point of view, it, the visual view of it is still a plane. And I'm really concerned about the sides and the belly bands. Nothing is permit with belly bands unless it's in the, something associated with the property recorded with the county, then a future owner can go and remove those belly bands. If it's set back, the story's set back like in the front, then it would be much more difficult, they have to go through a planning commission and permit process.
Yes, thank you.
And my third point is, which really affects me, is the solar orientation. I'm really worried about the glare from the solar panels. And I know the applicant has, willing to work with us and the placement of it, and I commend him, but I also talked to him about whether it's a requirement or not, whether the city could waive it. He's not in favor of it, if I understand, during a meeting, and if we could actually eliminate that as part of the plans, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can you have staff comment on solar panels and whether they're a city...
Let's go through the public comment, and then we'll go back to that and stuff. That's okay. Others who'd like to speak?
Betty Winholz. I'd like to point out that there was a major water sewer issue over on Elena Street, a few during the storms, and that I'm concerned that in the plans, as I looked at them, I could not see where the runoff from this property is going to go. And it's my understanding that the houses up on Nutmeg have easements on the Laurel property so they can come down with their runoff and/or sewer pipes. And I think I would appreciate it if the commission would explore that. Second, I want to agree with the man that spoke before. I don't know if you're, or if the staff viewed this under the current zoning ordinance, or if it's under the new ordinance that hasn't been approved by Coastal yet, and I guess I'd like to, an answer to that, which ordinance are you using? And referring to the wedding cake step-back, that totally, when you look at that project, you think it is solid because you can't see that it stepped back because of the balconies and because of the overhang. So you're defeating the purpose of that. And there are two houses to the south of this that actually have a third story, but they're so set back you can't see it. And so I'm going to disagree with the pictures that were shown up here because those houses aren't on Laurel Street. If you look at Laurel Street, there's about 16 houses, and there's five that actually have a third story, but only two of them you can't notice. So it's just the corners and the far end that actually looks like you have three-story houses. So this neighborhood really appears to have two stories. And just a little historical background, the reason the houses on Nutmeg are set down is because in our old general plan, you were never supposed to interfere with the sightline of the hillside. So all the houses on the east side of Nutmeg are illegal, according to the general plan when they were built, because they disrupted that hillside line. And so all the houses on the east side, which are the older houses, were set down so you could still see the hillside side like that. I think that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Betty.
Good evening. My name is Terry Simons, and first of all, I'd like to say I have repeatedly suggested to this commission and to the city council that one of the things that I would like to see in Morro Bay is a design review or an architectural review commission. When I lived at San Luis Obispo, I spent eight years as a commissioner on the San Luis Obispo Architectural Review Commission. So what I'm hearing tonight is very familiar territory. And as sympathetic as I would like to be with the applicant, with the appellant and her neighbors, realistically, staff and the city are obliged to follow the established codes and regulations. And I really think that if this appeal were to be upheld, that it would do a tremendous disservice to the community at large, because I think it would open the door for every future project to be challenged based on arbitrary conditions set forth by appellants rather than the actual code that's in place. I've spent 50 years in the development and building business, I've been a real estate salesperson. You buy a view when you own the property in front of you, and when you don't, you don't own the view. I know that a lot of these people believe that they have million-dollar views, but unless they've bought the view of every, or bought the title to every piece of property in front of them, they don't own the view. They own what they can see now, and they can lose that if somebody develops below them or in front of them. I hesitate to mention this, but this appellant comes with a lot of baggage to this community. Her prior appearance before the city planning commission and the city council centered around an appeal of the proposed wastewater treatment plant, which ultimately, and the numbers are still coming in, and the extras are still piling up, have cost the citizens of this community in excess of $50 million. Now, as a resident of the community, that $5,000 or $10,000 per capita may not seem like much, but the reality is the ongoing costs haven't even been calculated yet.
Thank you, Terry.
I have 35 seconds if I could. My concern here is that these kinds of appeals, appeals against the fundamental principles of planning and design can ultimately cost the community hundreds of millions of dollars of wasted effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Bass, and I've been here in Morro Bay for 44 years. And I don't have a problem, I'm not going to speak about the project itself, I'm going to talk about the process, and I'm going to need more than two minutes. They're usually given three minutes, and actually, appellate...
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. The person who pays 325 bucks to appeal an administrative permit will probably simply be donating revenue to the planning department. The truth is that the appellant has a huge bias disadvantage to overcome since the issuance of the administrative permit without any public input has already justified and approved the project. Invariably, the appeal is denied and the appeal fee is forfeited. The planning projects now in progress show multiple administrative permits given for residential additions, secondary units, demolition, and new construction, none of which the neighbors had a chance to learn about and publicly discuss the impacts to their quality of life and home investment. In fact, with the ubiquitous issuance of administrative permits, the planning commission and a few, has few public hearing items for discussion except appeals. Administrative permits customarily are used for non-controversial projects like fencing, driveways, vegetation, and maintenance issues. In checking with other municipalities, that is how administrative permits are defined and used by other governments in the county. Public hearings benefit citizens in many ways. Number one, speakers often have knowledge and firsthand experience that informs everyone. Two, public discussion can initiate mitigations that make a project acceptable, both to the neighbors and the appellate, the applicant. Three, how is the public best served when considering major residential changes by the arbitrary decision of one person who may not be aware of all the circumstances particular to that project, or by an agendized free public hearing before the planning commissioners, where concerned neighbors and interested people can hear others' concerns and express their own concerns? Morro Bay's Code 17.24.040, number T, provides for the community development director to, quote, "refer items to the planning commission where, in his or her opinion, the public interest would be better served by a planning commission, public hearing, and action."
Thank you, Nancy.
I have one...
Okay.
Please stop fleecing the residents that must pay for free speech when an administrative permit is issued for major development. That, if, even if, an impacted neighbor can afford the price of the appeal and knows that the odds are against winning that appeal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Mary Jo DeCio. I live on Laurel Avenue, and I thoroughly agree with our previous speaker, Ms. Bass. This house is a most egregious assault against the totality of the character of our neighborhood, its lack of aesthetics, its disrespect to the coastal views of its neighbors, the disregard for the negative effect on the property values of the nearby properties, and the sheer ugliness of this behemoth of a dwelling. I think there are many reasons why this project should not go forward. The height, the mass, the ugliness, the lack of landscape, no backyard, solar panels reflecting onto their neighbors. But I simply state that this really is an insult to our neighborhood. It sets an uneasy precedent for future building and sets neighbor against neighbor. I think that there may be facts that Nancy gave with which I would disagree, and I have read the plans, and I've looked at the model that you saw. I feel somehow that it smells. There's something wrong here. And I totally think we did not get input before you gave your approval. I don't understand that, and I, I find it very uncomfortable. And I would encourage everything that Nancy said, that we need to look at these things as neighbors, as community, before they are decided upon by an administrative body. Thank you.
John, Nate, do we have anybody in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Thank you very much. Last chance. Thank you all. I'm going to keep the public hearing open so that we can invite both the appellant and the applicant up again. But at this point, I think I'd like to turn it over to the commissioners and see if you have comments or questions based on public concerns, based on all the material that we've read and reviewed. And then I think at that point, I'd like to invite up the appellant and the applicant and see where we stand. Who would like to start?
Eric had the first question.
I did have a question with respect to the solar panels and the, whether or not that's a city mandate...
California state requirement, all new homes have to have solar, and they have to meet a certain production criteria as of January 2020.
Is the, is the jurisdiction, in other words, is the city allowed to specify anything within that location or anything like that? Is there any, are we just...
I, I don't think that we could. We, I mean, we haven't tried.
My next question is then, there's been some questions about noticing. The project wasn't noticed, the neighbors, they weren't given opportunities. Can you address that?
It was actually noticed twice because of the appeal. So it was noticed once with the administrative decision, and it met all of the noticing criteria for 500-foot radius around the subject property. And the appeal hearing was also noticed in the Tribune on the kiosks, postcards to all neighbors within 500 feet.
Joe?
Mine is not a question.
It'd be comments, comments.
But it is, it is a comment. It's my understanding that just as the objective standards of height and setback and stepbacks, and the ratios of footprint to lot size are enshrined in the building code, so is the concept of neighborhood compatibility. And it wouldn't be there if the assumption was that somehow the objective codes were always inevitably superior. Furthermore, I would be an idiot to not acknowledge that there's a fair amount of subjectivity in what determines a neighborhood compatibility finding. But the mere fact of subjectivity just means that we have to think a little harder and be a little more objective in our own ways, but it doesn't, it shouldn't preclude us from even attempting that kind of an, of an analysis. And furthermore, I think most people, when they have this concept, well, and the neighborhood, the neighborhood is also relevant, and I would define the neighborhood, not unexpectedly, as both sides of Laurel. And because of the imposing structures on the west side of Nutmeg, the unavoidable imposing nature of those structures, I think that those houses are... imposing nature of those structures, I think that those houses are inevitably to be considered part of the neighborhood. I wouldn't, I personally would not go much beyond that in trying to figure out what neighborhood compatibility is. And then the final thing I'll say is, you know, typically with neighborhood compatibility, there's always the example of somebody wanting to build a house which is just god-awful too big and big and not in keeping with the immediate neighborhood. And that's a relatively easy case to decide. However, it also seems to me that you can make the application of neighborhood compatibility or the absence, in this case, of neighborhood compatibility if the cumulative effect of significant inconsistencies adds up to a judgment that, taken as a whole because of these inconsistencies, the project is not compatible with the neighborhood. So what do I mean specifically about that? Well, I think there's been enough allusions to them already, but I look at the house, and when you add the living space of the balconies and the living space, the inhabitable space of the garage, it's larger than the 3,000 square feet and significantly larger than most of the houses on Laurel. And I, for one, don't subscribe to the notion that because you can find an exception or two in the neighborhood that incorporate the same inconsistencies that I might find in the applicant's plan, that doesn't end the debate. Just because a mistake may have been made in the past with regard to what is or is not neighborhood compatibility doesn't mean that this body should continue to repeat that mistake. So I look at what I'm seeing in terms of the plan, and the house is quite large, larger than most of the houses on Laurel. The setback with the overhanging roof and the pillars to the first floor completely negates the intent of what the stepback provisions are in the code. Most of the houses in the neighborhood, and I've gone back for two visits, have a fair amount of articulation on the western front, the western facade of Laurel, and, I might add, on the southern and northern facades. And with the exception of this bellyboard, which I'm not terribly impressed with, there is virtually no articulation on the facades of the proposal. Likewise, in terms of the textures of the facade, the use of wood and brick and stone and planking, most, if not all, the houses have generous variations in the texture. And I find no variation in the textures of the facade of the planned house. And what else am I going to say about that? Oh, and of course, the fact that I believe nearly every house on the west side of Nutmeg and the houses on the east side of Laurel have a backyard of some sort, which is a rather significant aspect of any neighborhood's identity, and this project has no backyard. So I, at this point, would find it hard to find that the plans are in keeping with what I would define as neighborhood compatibility.
Asia?
I just want to say that my goal in life is to be as eloquent as Joe. Definitely sounds like a practice lawyer. Yeah, I appreciate all those points. I have one question to start for staff, and that is, in the administrative permitting process, what are the opportunities for public input beyond, or what is that timeline? And when do they receive the mailer and the information about the project? Could I have a little bit more detail?
So noticing requirements is mandated. So there's specific requirements. So it's the same mandate for public hearings as well as admin notices. Only difference is you don't publish in the Tribune. So 10 days' notice, postcards to 500-foot radius of the subject property. And anyone can come to the office, look at staff or look at plans. At times when the office is not open, we make plans available online. So that opportunity exists.
And beyond that, when an administrative permit is granted, public input is supposed to come in that 10 days, and the resulting actions can be an appeal?
Well, no, after the 10 days, then there is an administrative decision that considers the public-
I see. The decision's not made yet.
And like the planning commission, we try to make it as soon after the 10 days as possible for the applicant. In this case, we delayed it four days to talk to the appellant and some of the other people in the neighborhood and then issued the permit. So in this case, there was an extra four days on top of the required 10 days.
So it's not like a decision's made, and then there can be public input? It sounds like the decision is made after public input.
Yes, absolutely.
So what I want, why I bring that up, because the question of process is really important in my mind. That's how government is run, is through process. And having public input and community engagement and government process is a strong moral standard for me, at least, as a government employee myself. And what I want to point out is that this, these administrative decisions are not actually only addressed through that 10-to-14-day process. These administrative decisions are decided on when the general plan is built and when the zoning code is discussed through multiple public input meetings, multiple planning commission meetings, city council meetings. And so I want to be clear that these administrative permits are not the decision of one person, but the decision of a body of work that the community has provided pretty intensive input into. And I know it's hard as a resident to know how some of those massive planning processes are going to impact our own residences, our own homes. But that's why I always want to encourage everyone to be a part of the community engagement and planning process.
So Asia, let's make sure Scott's still awake. And Scott, would you have, could you respond to what Asia said? And that was also, a number of folks in the public comment spoke to the administrative process. Do you have something you could add?
Certainly, Chair Roachin, thank you. So I think Asia was on the right track there. I mean, the development of the policies, and since we've recently done this, right, through the adoption of the general plan in 2021, and the recent adoption of the zoning code, a portion of which is under review by the Coastal Commission, but a good portion of which is in place now because council adopted it in the last year, provides the process whereby we approve projects. The idea that we would take every single project to the planning commission, one, would be laborious, and two, additions to single-family homes, new single-family homes, they're addressed, you know, pretty robustly in the city's zoning code, meaning it gives you the development standards, it gives you design requirements. In fact, there are design policies that fly to homes in the zoning code. And then there's also the adopted design guidelines, which were put together by the city's planning commission and recommended for adoption to city council, and the city council adopted them. So we have a lot of design direction to follow when we're approving these types of things. You wouldn't really want every project to be going to planning commission, to be some sort of one-off type situation. That's kind of the worst-case scenario, really. You want projects that are adhering to the development standards and the design guidelines that we have. I think in the instance you have here for you this evening, though, there are certainly, you know, some fair points raised related to architectural consistency of the project as it relates to those sort of front pillars and things that are all on the front, and whether that actually, you know, keeps the line of the house all in one plane or does it step it back. So I think those are certainly fair arguments that have been made by the public this evening.
Asia, did you want to comment?
Yeah, so just to continue on that thought, I recognize that despite years of input from the public that go into our codes, there are a lot of nuances within, as Joe was saying, what consists of a neighborhood. But when I look at this neighborhood, or when I think about neighborhoods throughout Morro Bay in general, I can't see a neighborhood as only the street that a project is positioned on, especially with things like transportation routes, with things like views from top to bottom and bottom to top, and with things like community within neighborhoods. A single street, in my mind, is not a neighborhood. And I think I actually would extend it, but the 500, it sounds like what the standard is that's used in the administrative process is that 500-foot circumference. And I'm not the local expert on architecture and what is on trend or what is popular. But when I drive through, if I just limit my view of the, what I would consider the neighborhood, if I limit that to the street above, the street below, and maybe some ends of the blocks, I just find far too, more than one or two examples of very, very similar sorts of architecture from decades. So old architecture that looks, that has very similar facades, new architecture that has very similar facades. And so I just want to acknowledge that there are nuances within these codes, and I think it's important to address the community, the neighborhood cohesion. But my view of what the neighborhood is has to extend beyond those 10 or 15 houses on that immediate street. So that's not a question, but just a pontification.
Asia, thank you very much. Nicely said. There's a couple of questions that I'd like just to go to that we heard from the public. Eric addressed the solar issues. The solar is a requirement, but I could be in an alternative location. We've heard a lot of concern about the architecture and the height. We also heard from Betty about drainage. Nancy, do you have anything to add on that?
No, only that it is thoroughly reviewed by Public Works. So they-
And that'll be part of the-
And they signed off, and they have conditional approval, so.
Got it. I guess at this point, with your agreements-
You have questions?
Oh, you still do?
Yeah, can I be-
Yeah, Mike, please. We started with you. So we'll kind of, because I just want to comment at this point. I'm not, I heard Joe. Joe, you're very adamant, you're very good at what you do, which is try to open up our minds towards, you know, what we're trying to do and do it well. Now, I want to say, when I was up there, I've never seen a place like that in Morro Bay. And I'd like to ask staff, when it comes to applying these kind of design standards and guidelines, this is probably not the easiest place to do it. Is that true or false?
Since I've never done it anywhere else?
It's easy for you.
I would say whatever you said.
Yeah. No, the point I'm trying to make is, I want to dovetail on what Asia just said. It's not just about one street. I had to go to the top, I had to go to Laurel, and I had to go to the bottom. This was a slope like no other slope with all kinds of homes. Different massings, different, this was not easy. But I asked you during our turn whether it met the guidelines and the standards for this community and these neighborhoods. Now, that's what I'm shooting for, right? I mean, if I want to, you know, make them up as I go, that's a whole different story. I had to look at the whole neighborhood, and it's true, what Asia's saying, and this didn't happen. This isn't one home that's going to change the neighborhood.
Right.
And this has been happening. Joe made a good point. Do we allow things to continue? Not necessarily. I liked Mr. Simmons' idea about an ARC, an Architecture Review Committee. Where I came from, we had a council member and two planning commissioners that would sit down and deal with these, because the council wanted to know, what was the planning commission going to boot up to it? Because we had to shake these out. These weren't easy. That's why I asked you that question. So we did have an ARC that worked with a council member and two planners to try to get it right, including staff, by the way. Staff was always part of that process. So I'm just saying, maybe there is a better way, but until we have it, this is the best we can do.
Right.
So I'm just trying to make that point be pointed out.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. Nancy?
So, and on that point, I wanted to go to a slide. The planners have the advantage that you don't have yet and the public doesn't have yet of seeing the houses that are being approved. The trends are for modern houses, different kinds of roofs. So this is an image of approved but not yet completed or maybe not even broken ground homes. Some of them are on Laurel. A lot of them are very similar to the subject property, maybe a different roof line. The one in the bottom corner is on Laurel. That is approved, it is not under construction yet. But I think the trend is people want a modern home, and Morro Bay didn't used to embrace that, but they're starting to embrace that, at least from residential design guidelines and in design guidelines criteria, which says that we're not supposed to encourage or discourage any specific style. Just look at how it articulates and how it fits into the neighborhood. The other thing that Joe pointed out is the square footage. The square footage maybe is important. It is in our new zoning code because it determines whether it's administrative review or planning commission review. But other than that, it's about the perceived bulk and mass. And a couple of weeks ago, we saw a good example of that, where we were reviewing a home that had a very large subterranean garage. But it looked like a regular garage from the street. This is the same. If you, if I went back to the other slide, if you look at the scale of garage doors, which are almost all 16 feet probably by eight or nine high, and you look at the garage door relative to the scale of the home, that gives you a little different perspective because we're all looking at something and we're slanted with our own personal views. But you're just looking at perceived scale, bulk, and mass. And height is off the table. They meet the height requirement, they're allowed to have that height. Most other homes that had permits with the city of Morro Bay maximized their height. How they used that height was up to them. They could have had a two-story with a vaulted ceiling. There is a house in the neighborhood that has four stories, they could have three stories. It doesn't, from the city's perspective, it's okay how they use that box. The importance is that they're meeting the criteria of the development standards. So the sides, the lot coverage, the height.
Got it. Nancy, thank you. I'd like to go back to the public, but Eric, did you have?
I just have comments. I haven't given my comments.
Please, go ahead. I mean, we're not done yet, but you can do it at this point.
The subject of neighborhood, there's two different sort of ways neighborhoods perceive. By the neighbors in a neighborhood, you define your neighborhood by your friends and acquaintances that you communicate with regularly. But for the sake of city efforts, neighborhood has to be given a definition that works everywhere in town. We have to create a circle essentially, because if neighborhood is just strictly subjective, these five houses or those 12 or these 26, because the neighborhood happens to be shaped one way or another, that's impossible to take into the context of city planning documents. And so this neighborhood circle of 500 feet is just fairly common around the nation, really. You see it in most cities and most jurisdictions. And it allows for the city to send out notifications to those people in the general area. It allows for the applicant to look at his general area and make a determination as to what are the residences in this technically decided neighborhood. And otherwise, it becomes very arbitrary as to what is the neighborhood. And so I tend to want to follow the city's definition, because that's what the applicant and the appellant and everybody else, if we all follow the same circle, we generally can't disagree about that, whereas we can disagree if it's subjective. And then I provided you, staff, with some aerial surveys that were done by the Navy, aerial photos. We're blessed with a tremendous record of Navy photos in California. We're blessed with a tremendous record of Navy photos in California. And so, these aerial records date back to the '30s, probably because we were worried about some war threat. But they took a lot of photos, and so, we have them. And so, this, these are aerial, the first one there is an aerial photo of this neighborhood. Actually, I-
I'm trying to get to it.
There you go. So, that's 1930 in this neighborhood. And if you know the area, you can see this sort of trapezoidal shape and nutmeg at the top. And the little red rectangle I've drawn in there myself represents the lot in question. And if you look at it, you can sort of see that there's a general little swale running from top to bottom through that property. It was the low spot on, you can't really tell anymore because there's all these houses built around it. In the old days, that was the lowest point in that little section. Well, not, it was a swale, let's call it. So, the next slide. So, this slide is 1956, and I'm sorry, it's a slightly different angle. And it's, the arrow is pointing to the little house. And there's, the next one is a close-up from the same slide. And that little rectangle again is the house. And there's two lots empty to the north, and then a house to the north. And there's two lots empty to the south, and then a house to the south. And because I grew up here, and because I used to do my soapbox derby car with the Cub Scouts down Avalon, I have a general memory of this neighborhood being primarily one-story homes, whether or not they were on one side of the street or the other. Had long, the ones on the downhill side of streets, on the west side of streets, had deep front yards. That, I mean, deep below the house, there was a big crawl space because kids would hide down there and smoke cigarettes. But typically, they're one-story. And so, this is 56, mind you. This house is a 1953 house, according to the documents. And so, this house is three years old in this photo. And it's one of the first, let's say, eight houses on Laurel. And it's before all the houses on that meg. And that's the existing houses there on the applicant's site. So, the next slide. So, this is 1963, so plus or minus 10 years, some years later, five years, seven years later. And now, you can see the little tiny rectangle in there, my red rectangle. And suddenly, there's, the next slide, I think, is a close-up. Nope, let's go back, sorry. There's a house immediately to the north. And then, it looks like the appellant's house is in place there, although I thought it was a 65 house. I think according to this, it's a 63. So, the houses are coming up around the little house. And then, if you go to the next slide, 1972, there's more houses around the little house. And mind you, the little house was there pretty much by itself, right? It had 360-degree views for a long time. And then, slowly around it got built, all these different structures that are different heights. And go to the next slide. That's, this is a close-up of the 72. So, and so, in 86, we see now there's a house behind the applicant's house. That's new, basically. It was, it was built 30 years later, so that there was nobody behind the little house for 30 years. And it had a view out the back to the hills. And then, the next slide is essentially today. And with the exception of the two lots across the street, which magically somehow have remained vacant, this little house is now completely surrounded. And if you go to the next slide, this is what that little house has to look at now. So, that little house is looking at two-story to plus or minus three facade behind it, although it's not three-story, just very tall buildings behind it. And so, let's just, for the sake of discussion, pretend that we were this little house. This little house has watched its neighborhood change. And if this, if this were the appellant saying, "Look, all these houses have come in around me, and they're all different. They've all blocked my view," we would all be sitting here and saying, "Oh, what horrible neighbors these people are because they blocked this poor little house's view." But the fact of the matter is, time has gone on, and all of these houses that have been built so far were built to code. They were all built to mat zoning. This, in the old days, Morro Bay was full of little 700-square-foot houses. And they were humble little second homes for a lot of people from everywhere. And people came, and they enjoyed them, and they left. And somebody else came, and time went on, and houses got bigger, and time went on, and houses got bigger. And today, we have bigger houses than we used to. And so, this little house, if it were the one here as the appellant, it would be very upset and mad. But it's there. Here it is. Its neighbors are there. And now, it wants to get what its neighbors have. And that's, without discussing architecture or size, bulk, and scale, it, does it not deserve what its neighbors have? At this point, it's been insulted by its neighbors. Again, that's a bad word, but it's been, its landscape has tremendously changed, its views. And so, all I'm getting at is, when you put yourself in the shoes of the other, of the other home, and look at it over time, it will change your perception to some degree. And the new home has a mansard roof, which many people don't seem to like. But there are other examples. Within the 500-foot radius, I found three mansard roofs, two at the bottom of Casitas, and one a little bit farther. Two houses north from Casitas. So, that one's at the outside edge, so I don't really count it. But the two that are at the bottom of Casitas are just several houses away. And mansard roof is a, is an architectural style, as are many of the other houses. And yes, we can debate the architecture this way or that, but it does become subjective. Something that Joe said affected me. There are cumulative effects with the project. And when we look at a project, and we're often willing to let things slide a little bit here because, well, it's just one little thing. And then, we're willing to let things slide over there. Oh, that's two little things. But when they start adding up, and there's lots of different things that don't necessarily meet the subjective terms of the design guidelines, I don't disagree-
So, I'm going to reel you in here.
I don't, I was leaving. I don't disagree with Joseph.
Yeah. And, and that was like, really helpful. What I'd like to do at this point, with everybody's agreement, is I really want to give the appellant and the applicant a chance to kind of resolve this. And I think we've laid a good foundation of where the commission is and what we see the options are. We've heard from the public. We've all read the correspondence, which was considerable. And Eric's beautiful visual essay, that was really helpful. If the commissioners think this is right, I'd like to invite the appellant back up again. One of the things that Tina did was she put five opportunities to sort of solve this to what she thinks would be the satisfaction of the homeowners around the project. I think that's a worthwhile effort to talk about that and see if we can get somewhere. Commissioners, we are, yes? Okay. So, Tina, are you willing to come back up and talk about your five points?
So, um, just real quick, I, I was shocked that this got a rubber stamp. How come this didn't go through some kind of review? This, don't understand that. Anyway, you could pull back, you could pull back the mansard roof to maybe three feet over the upper deck. So, you have a stepped-up effect, and it's not such a huge mass right at the street, three stories. This is big. Predominantly, two stories on the east side of Laurel. So, this is big. And then, take away the columns completely. Step it up. And this is-
Can I articulate your points with you?
Sure.
So, your first point is to pull back the mansard on the top roof, which I think would help the architecture. It would make it more of a stepped project. And also, remove those columns, which give it a kind of a flat facade quality, the two corner columns.
Right. And you've got, you've got a view shed from both north and the south adjacent properties that are trying to look through this to get that, those iconic views. So, architecturally, it could structurally happen. Floor joists out here, supporting the deck, and then-
Well, let's be specific, and then we can ask Michael to comment. So, let's say that's a 12-foot-wide deck, I believe.
The top one is, yeah.
You pull it back and maybe a three-foot overhang rather than a, you know, that's probably a 14-foot overhang. That would be one option that might help the design. And we'll hear from Michael. Your second consideration was on the second level?
Remove the columns completely. There's also an advantage to moving the mansard roof back to about three feet. It's going to be much more light in the house. I really worry about a 12-foot covered deck, and it's going to be dark and-
Right.
You know, maybe it likes that, you know?
It's kind of, yeah, you have to wait to hear what he thinks, yeah.
Yeah. These are just suggestions, but, yeah. And the railing, I mean, you've, you've got floor joists that can support this. So, I'm not worried structurally.
So, your third point is to lower the entire house by two feet?
Yeah. Dig down two feet, and that'll really make the neighbors, you know, secure in that they won't have their view. Because we don't really know for sure. I mean, truthfully, Michael tried with the PVC pipes and everything, but if you're going to do story poles, it should be done by-
So, Michael can, and I think his designer is, I hope, on the Zoom, but we can ask their comments on that to see if there's any opportunity. And the two feet could either be, you could either sink the house, or you could actually lower the ceiling heights on some of the floors.
Yeah, there's all kinds of-
That would be a question.
Options, yeah.
But at least we're having that conversation.
Yeah. And I want to, I want to talk a little bit about the lowering down into the ground a little bit. There isn't a problem with a driveway that kind of slopes down. You make a bump, make, you know, there's all kinds of ways to do that. Look at my driveways below the street. My house is below the-
Well, we need to hear from Michael on that, because it's, that's not a typical approach that an architect would take or, you know, a designer.
It's very common here in Morro Bay. There's-
I'm just saying-
A zillion houses like that.
We'll hear from the applicant.
Okay. What's, okay, so dig down two-
Solar panels?
Pardon me?
Solar panels? That was your point for-
Yeah. Okay. Locate the solar panels. Man, this is, this is really, this is really offensive. This is going to be the neighborhood joke. We can't let-
So, they're, they're required, but there is an opportunity to set them on the flat roof?
Yeah. You could get short ones. There's a lot of flat roof here. I know that-
So, we'll hear from Michael, right?
Yeah. Okay. Shorten the third-story floor-to-ceiling mirrored glass doors. Okay, now, I just heard tonight that they're going to be clear?
They're called, like, they're, yeah, they're not clear. They're, well, they're actually translucent, I guess. Rain, yeah. Oh, those, those are clear, those doors.
That's going to be clear.
Yeah. On your plan, they're recessed. There's a deck there, right? How, how deep is that deck, Michael?
That deck is 16 feet.
Okay.
And it's flushed with the facade, right?
It's flushed with the house soaking.
I'm sorry, we need that on the mic.
Yeah, yeah. So, can we let Michael come up now and respond?
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
So, can I interject a little bit before-
Yeah, please, Nancy.
Okay. So, the, the appeal is a legal document. And the grounds for appeal, we covered. The requested relief or action, so the first one is require an asbestos report. That's a given. That's always required. The other ones relate to require that the city make the project fitting with other homes and adhere to the maximum building height requirement of 25 feet. And then, the third one is require that the city make sure the project adhered to the design standards. So, a couple of the suggestions-
Please, yeah.
Pull back the mansard roof. Clearly, that could be perceived as a correction that would fit into her requested relief or action.
And our concerns about the architecture.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But not changing the design for the views, because that sets a very dangerous precedent. The other thing is requiring him to lower the house. He is-
We're not going to require anything.
I know. But I mean, even to talk about it, that's not a relief that she has requested. She asked it to adhere to the height standard, and it does. But to ask someone to lower their ceiling to floor or put their house in a hole is also setting a dangerous precedent because they met the height requirement. They met all of the development-
I do understand.
Okay.
Can I make a comment too?
Please, Mr. Chair Roshan, is that?
I agree with you, Nancy. I think it's very difficult to try to bargain an agreement in half an hour regarding how much money it's going to take and time and energy. I mean, if we get to that point, I want to hear from the applicant. But if we got to that point, I would rather continue it, because I'm not going to, you know, if, I mean, if that was even a possibility. But I want to hear from the applicant, because they've met all the requirements. But this is more of a, are you willing to?
Right.
So, I guess what I would say is that, listening very carefully to you and our responsibility as a commission, this is an opportunity for the two of them to talk neighbor to neighbor.
That's right.
There would be no conditions that we could imply, we could impose, other than maybe architectural changes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, Nancy, if I understand you correctly, placing the structure two feet lower, alter, which to my way of thinking would alter my perception of the bulk of the house, is not a design standard request?
No, he met the height requirement.
I'm not talking about height. I'm saying, I'm looking at the house, hypothetically, all right? I'm looking at the house. It appears too bulky to me.
Joe's talking about compatibility.
Therefore, not compatible with the neighborhood. The suggestion is made to lower the house by two feet. To my perception, it looks less bulky. And I like, I favor that solution. Now, that's precluded because lowering-
The residential design guidelines just say that it needs to meet the height. It does not say you should put the house in a hole to reduce-
We've got it. Yeah, we know. Scott, are you there?
Chair Roshan, yeah. Do you mind if I, William, for a second?
Please, please, we'd like to hear that.
Thanks. I think Commissioner Ingraffia raises a good point, and I'd like to speak to it. I think, you know, I think this is why Nancy actually, you know, provided some commentary here, because it was in response to the request by the appellant, Ms. Metzger, as it relates to wanting to preserve the views if we reduce the height of the structure by two feet. That's where I think, you know, Nancy was concerned, and that's where I'm concerned. If we're going down the road of, you know, saying we're reducing the height, were we to do that, to address that concern, which is expressed related to just the view blockage, that would be, again, a concern to me as well.
So, we get that. But how about the compatibility issue?
So, that, so, yeah. So, if there is a compatibility, still a compatibility issue, and that is, potentially, that's one way to address, you know, scale and bulk. So, don't disagree with Commissioner Ingraffia at all on that. I mean, there's a number of ways to do that. I do think you do need to look at the house in its totality. A good portion of that garage area, that lower floor, is actually a basement, you know, being more than 50% below grade. So, not dissimilar to, again, a house that Nancy pointed out that you saw over on Beachcomber a couple of meetings ago.
Got it. And we're not encouraging that either way? Or what we're asking is, we do feel that the house would be more compatible. I think the commission does. And is that even an option? Scott, can we go to Michael? Is that all right?
You know, I think you guys are good. Yeah. I'm, I just was-
Commissioners, okay.
Little bit of input, that's all.
Perfect.
Asia?
This is my closing, or?
Right now, the public comment is still open, because we're trying to see if there's any way two neighbors can resolve this.
Okay. I'll just go straight to it then. The overhang here, I have skin cancer. I have skin cancer every four to six months. I have to have my face, my head, my arms burned off, and, and I deal with that. That's why I have this deck. The house that I have, if you drove by, you might have seen the curtains closed, because I- because the sun is really hard on me. And this allows me to enjoy my house the way that I want to. For me to see more rock, right now, I have to walk out of my existing house and step down the staircase so I can see past the other house that's been built around me. I could have bought the house next door to me and I chose not to.
Let's, let's focus on, on the issue if you could for us, yeah.
Because, all right, removing the columns, these are structural. Those columns are structural, they hold up the floors. Dropping the feet by, the house by two feet. The aerial footage, you saw a waterway coming through there. Well, that's when the rainstorm happens. I have a stream coming through my property. I've hired a civil engineer to address all the water issues because I'm addressing not only my water issues, but the water issues behind me because they're not addressed. That water rolls over the top of my retaining wall and down and under my house and I have to get a shot back and try to clear that out of there. I have to address other people's issues because they never were addressed when the city's water.
Is there the opportunity, not necessarily to lower it, but to take height out of the nine-foot clear ceilings? Is there any opportunity there?
I had to out of my garage. Now, the reason for those heights is because back here in my bedroom, and I wrote a letter to this, so you understand where I'm coming from, there's a point in time where I'm at the end of my game. While I can still see the bay and the rock through my bedroom window here, if you lower me down, I, I lose my views. The views that I'm allowed to by code, 25 feet. I followed every rule before I even engaged in this. I was going down to the city and talking with them to learn all the rules and all, and what was required of me. And I've met all the standards and then I handed it to an architect and engineers to make this legal. I have over $100,000 in this thing. And I tried to be considerate as I could to the neighbors behind me. Yes, neighbors don't like change, but change is part of life and structures change all up and down California. You're going to find this structure.
The solar panels, are you willing to relocate?
Solar panels, I said to them, I'm more than happy to remove them, but the city says it's a state law. Did the research, they sell solar panels that have no glare on them. If I put them on this, and I've even made sure that the roof would be gray so they would have no sun reflection going back on their windows. That's how I designed this house and that's why I went with gray instead of a white house was because there's a lot of reflection that pulls off and pushes on people. So I'm having a welded roof put on by the local roofing company, Centennial or something like that, but Rusty, I talked to him last week. Welded roof, if you put these solar panels on that roof, they're going to stand out like a sore thumb. This mansard here, the parapet here is all black and the windows are all black and the big sliders that, that part and go all the way into the wall are black.
So it's a no on that.
These match, these match that. I don't care, we can put those over there, but I don't, I think they'd be really ugly. But I don't, if that's what they want, I'll put it up there.
All right, so we got a yes on that one. You would look at putting the solar panels off of the mansard onto the flat roof?
If that's what they want, but they're really going to stick out.
Well, you've heard, you've heard that, yeah. So that's why we're talking about it.
Because it is black, okay?
Okay, and then the only other one, I don't quite understand this one, the sliding glass door on the back. If there's any way you can help with that?
Yes.
There is a, you know, Tina, there is a deck there?
What, I, I'll go ahead and face this if, if you don't mind, but.
Sure.
So. This is flush with, this is flush with the wall here.
Oh.
Okay, these are all flush, they're not balconies that go out because I felt it would be rude to have people standing out there and looking onto their decks. So I want a privacy, they want privacy. I was talking about putting a three-quarter wall up here. So they would give them more pri, give me privacy, give them more privacy. Or I could put bamboo up here. So, but just enough that I can see more rock in the bay is all I'm looking for here. Down below, I totally would cover that with bamboo. I don't want anyone seeing in, I don't want to see out. So that gives neighbors total privacy here, down below where the spa is. Up above, I would, and I talked with the neighbors about this when I met with them, that I would do whatever it took to make them happy with that as well. I just, that's all I can do, you know?
So I guess at this point, commissioners, I want to hear from you. I think we've looked at the issues that the public has raised. We do have the opportunity to talk about the architecture, which I think is within our, our opportunity. And compatibility is still a, an open issue for us. So I'm ready for comments or if we have a motion, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'd like to just make a couple more comments.
Please.
So I had thought about this lowering of, of structure to some degree, but I didn't really understand the site very well. And upon looking at these 1930 aerials, I realized this is a low spot and it is, it is a place where water does channel and it, it would, it wouldn't be appropriate to dig down into this property because it's going to put the house into essentially a water, what would in a heavy rain be where the water wants to be. And so that's something. And then with respect to where the solar panels are or aren't, the, the model is here and the plans are not the same. The model has a rake in its roof that's different than the rake on the, on the plans. The plans is four and 12 and this is essentially 45 degrees. And then the recessed area shown on the model here is also quite a large distance and so it gives the impression that the solar panels would be able to be recessed. But on act, on the plans that I view, the recessed area of the roof only appears to be six or eight inches down from the top of the roof. So I, as the planning commissioner, don't want to condition these solar panels one way or the other. I don't think, because no matter who gets them, someone's going to get it one way or the other. It's either going to be higher up in the sky because they're on the flat roof or they're going to be on this four and 12 slope. I, I don't want, I don't think that, this, I don't want to design by committee as a group, non-architects here discussing stuff without, this not, I don't think that's my, my reason to be here. I see other mansards in, in the, in the area. I don't, I don't, I don't particularly have a feeling about mansards one way or the other that I care to express because it's subjective and.
Got it.
That's, that, the decks, I think, whether or not there's a, a three-foot addition to one deck or another is between the neighbor and, and the applicant. And I don't think this committee should be saying you should add this or that for two feet or one foot.
Got it.
I would like to advocate with respect to the solar panels that they be placed in an area that's least conspicuous. I was hoping that the parapet of the mansard roof would conceal all, if not most, of the solar panels. If that's not the case, I have to decide between sticking up out of the roof or being attached to the side. I, I don't know which is the least bad decision, so I'm still thinking about that. I'm sympathetic to, you know, the, the applicant's medical situation. However, I, I also feel that I have a public responsibility in terms of, of, to advocate what's necessary to minimize the sense of bulk in architecture. And it is written into that code about the preference for stepped-back architecture. And I, I'm adamant that the current design defeats what the intent of that provision is. I'm persuaded that because of the terrain, perhaps it's not a good idea to, to lower the house. I would, I would hope that we could lower it something, be that six inches or 12 inches. And I'm hoping that we perhaps could lower the garage by a foot and perhaps we could scrape six inches off of the, one of the floors and that might make it less bulky. Again, I am not addressing, I repeat, I am not addressing in some way to circumvent or thwart the 25-foot maximum height. What I am trying to reduce is the look of the house from street level, which is well over 30 feet. And it's that bulk that I'm addressing, not illegally entitled to 25-foot maximum height. I'm, let's see. That's all, I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
Yeah, and Bill, I'll just dovetail, I'll just dovetail and keep on going with what was suggested. The columns seem to be structural, so there goes the columns because that's more of a structural issue. So they would have to re-engineer it so that those columns aren't needed for structural purposes. Is that about right Nancy? Because those are structural. Is that what he meant by that?
Yes.
Those are going to hold that house up.
May I interrupt?
Yeah, sure. I'm just reiterating what the applicant told us.
Right, but I, I mean, I, I don't think we should be precluded from, from asking for structural changes, just as we ask for architectural changes if they're, they're noteworthy and for a good reason.
Okay, well, I wasn't going there yet. I was just, you know, trying to eliminate, remember, we're going down this checklist. What can we do, what can't we? So that's going to cost the applicant obviously more money, more than the $100,000 that they've already invested in the architecture and engineering of this home. So that's a possibility, but not a requirement. It's not something we can make them do because they're already meeting the standards based upon the administrative review by our staff. And then the other thing would be, I don't think Eric covered it, was I'm looking at the, you know, the sliding glass, the glass doors on the side, you know, how, they were up against the wall and you said there's nothing there, just sliders, right? Just have the sliding doors? Yeah, oh, okay. And those seem to be okay then. I, I mean, the applicant wants to keep them the way they are, right? So, so again, I don't think those were as much of a problem as maybe was presented, so I'm okay with leaving those. So the only thing I really see is, at this point, based upon our discussion, is that roof, you know, the cantilever roof and then, I think that's it. That's all I want to say. I'm still holding out on trying to get maybe concession for that even though we can't require it. So that's it for me. Asia, any comments?
I don't have anything in addition to what's just been said. I think they've covered it.
So commissioners, we need to find a way to move forward. And I guess I would encourage us to look at architectural improvements. And I do think stepping the front is a reasonable way to do it. And we can leave it up to the applicant how he does it, but we could say that the bulk needs that kind of, I think, architectural treatment. The other thing would be if we have any reason to believe there should be more materials on the house, anything. And it's, for me, the architecture is because of the, the expanse of the simple sidewalls that I could see some sort of treatment would be helpful there in both the scale and the edges. That would be my opportunities right now is to work better with the architecture. Others?
Can I ask a question, Chair Roshan? So have you closed the public?
I have not yet, but I think.
The reason I'm asking is because I'd like to get that, the applicant back up, the person who's going to be building this, to see if they're willing to go where you're willing to go.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that one more time. But, yeah.
Does, does your suggestion about, about the terrace steps backs allow for the columns or is it?
No, I think to have it stepped back, you'd have to remove the columns, take the overhang back. If he needs that big of a deck, he'd have to make a smaller third floor. I, I would suppose.
So the applicant? Oh.
So you're saying that our, as the planning commission, we can ask for or recommend architectural changes based on that being a valid appeal?
What we've heard from Nancy and I think Scott as well, is compatibility is about the architecture. And architecture is one way that you can, you know, manage compatibility. In this case, the, I think the comments about how bulky it is, the flatness of the facade, the box shapes, they're kind of right. And if there's any way we could make a condition around the architecture to gain that compatibility, that seems to me to be an opportunity. Nancy, do you have a comment?
I'd like to hear from Scott on procedural, but I'm thinking that it could be a condition that is, architectural improvements are left up to the applicant to reduce bulk and meet scale and bulk criteria for neighborhood compatibility. And then you could add to be reviewed and approved by a community development director.
Yeah, and believe it or not Nancy, I was hoping the applicant would said, would say what you just said. I was hoping, you know, they would come up and say, I'm willing to do this. That's why Bill set it up, Commissioner set it up. And I was hoping the applicant would be willing to do that.
So Nancy, your recommendation is not to make a specific architectural move?
Well, I, I'm.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chair Roshan. I think, I think direction from the commission is, is key here. So I think, you know, what was before that you just described was, and I, I can't, from my perspective, couldn't see head nods on the commission, so I don't really know what the consensus is there and you'll have to help me with that. But was material change, perhaps on the lower floor or something along those lines, but could be other, in other locations. And then to pull back that, that top roof to some degree to help it, you know, I guess, reestablish the step back that's, that is there, but is hard to really see because of having the columns out at the front of the building. Is there any desire specifically, like for an amount? Like if they stepped it back three feet or four feet, that would be good? Or I'd like to hear, you know, maybe about what the scale of that might be, what might be the preference of the commission for the scale of that type of step back?
I think it needs to be substantial enough that it looks like an intentional setback. So I would say to leave some overhang, like it should be a minimum of eight feet and that would leave a four-foot overhang. And if more is needed, you could always adjust the size of the bedroom, I think.
Okay, that's, that's good. Rest of the commission comfortable with that direction?
Eric?
I think that is the major discussion is the stepping back of the facade of the house. I think that I would agree that that's the discussion that we have purview over that is within constraints of the design considerations.
Others, Mike?
I'll let go, Joe.
Joe?
I'll chime in.
Yes, but, and I, I forgot to mention it when we moved on. But, but also, you know, some additional articulation in those bare facades on the, on the north and south side as well.
So I think we have consensus around this, Asia?
No, I can't, I can't, I don't think we can speak to the north and south sides as far as articulation, just looking at the rest of the homes in the neighborhood and the modern style. But I do think that addressing the step back of the facade is worth pursuing.
I think so too and, but I'm sort of with you. I'm not sure a bellyboard is architecture, so I'm a little worried about the bellyboards.
Yeah.
So Chair, Chair Roshan, on that, on that point, you did reference a material change.
Yes.
Something that, you know, you know, breaks up the, the look of those sort of stark walls. I, I agree, bellybands aren't maybe the best thing in the world. It was just one of the options that we provided to the applicant. He took, so if that's where you would like to go, then we can work with the applicant on that.
Okay. So rather than go to public hearing again, I think there's consensus up here. And if I could ask for a motion from the, the commission?
I've been trying to find this section. Do you know Nancy, the, the section within the Morro Bay Design Guidelines that refers to stepping back of the second and third stories offhand?
I'd have to find it, but you can just say what you're asking for and I can add a reference in the condition when I write it up.
And Nancy, with that, the applicant would work with staff and, to find agreement, right?
Work with staff for approval by the community development director.
Okay. So I think we would deny the appeal based on two conditions. To specify the setback and then to ask for more articulation and materials on the side, I think the sidewalls as well as the face of the building.
Yeah, I'll agree with that. So essentially that's it. The, the motion would be to deny the appeal and based on condition of reducing the, the roof extension on the third story.
Eight feet.
Eight feet or more. And eliminating the posts that give the front of the house that the, the appearance of being a rectangle and, as well as adding in some sort of secondary material on, on the first floor, on the front and side of the property, both sides of the property.
So before we.
Clear enough.
I think it is. I think it is. Let me ask Scott and Nancy one more time. Does this make sense to do it this way?
It does to me.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that the motion should also say, deny the appeal and approve the project with these added conditions, because there is a permit has been issued.
We have a motion, Eric? Yes? Do we have a second?
Can we have, can we give staff an opportunity to actually write it out and repeat it back to us, or is that, no?
What an idea, yeah.
That's too much pressure.
You can have a second.
Seriously?
We've got all night.
I mean, you're going to see it when you're going to-
Okay.
Yeah.
You don't want to repeat it?
I, I have notes here, so I need to look up the section. But basically, the, the project needs to go back and have architectural improvements and material changes at the front, and pull back the roof line to no more than a four-foot overhang to reduce bulk.
No, eight feet, let's say eight feet from the front.
No, pull to no more than a four foot. So it's 12 now. They're going to reduce it eight, so that the overhang is four feet.
Yeah. But if he wants a bigger deck with shade, he could pull the building back, right?
It should be eight feet.
Yeah, and you're asking him to remove eight feet of-
Eight feet from the front facade.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point, Chair Roshan.
And then the second commission is- Material change on the exterior, including the north and the south side. And I would assume also the east side.
On, on the sub, on what would be perceived as the first floor, the subterranean, the garage floor. That's, that's what I heard from the community development director.
Oh, well, the garage floor only has, it goes underground in the back.
Correct.
You're saying not, I thought it would be on the second, or the lower living level, the middle level.
Perhaps I missed. Scott, can you speak back? What I heard you say, Scott, was first floor?
So, yes, Commissioner Meyer, I think we'll, we have to look at, because Nancy's correct, unfortunately, that's a basement. We'll have to make sure that it looks balanced when they bring it forward, and so we can leave this sort of design of that.
I don't really have a, I won't, I don't want to make a specific statement about first or second floor. I'm just going to leave it.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just add the material change along the side elevations in the front elevation as well. And then we'll work with the applicant to make sure it's balanced and looks appropriate.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Joe. And I'm going to ask for any further discussion before we vote. I want to thank everybody for being here. This, I thought, was not an easy case to hear. I really want to applaud the applicant, who looks to me like is trying very hard. The side yard setbacks, those kinds of things, it seems to me that you've been considerate and you're trying. I hope that the thing we're talking about with the step backs, you know, I think it's going to help the neighborhood. This is an extraordinary neighborhood. I know why you guys are fighting hard, and it's really, really beautiful. I think the commission was trying hard. These are pretty impossible to solve. Other discussion? Would you take a vote, please?
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks again for being here.
Do you take the motion?
Can you, could you talk with Nancy, like afterwards, or she'll get it to you? That would be best. Thank you. Do we need a break? Okay. I'm sorry, everybody's hanging out here so long for the preservation piece. We did our best to get through that. We'll convene in five minutes. Thanks. So I'd like to give out awards to people that stay for the whole meeting. I think that's really an accomplishment, especially, yeah, well, not Terry, but everybody else. So we're going to keep this one short. And I'll do a little introduction, and then we're going to ask for public comment. The introduction is that the last meeting, this commission wanted to elevate historic preservation to a more visible level and a priority for us. And we're encouraging the council to do the same. But we're going to pursue our own, I think, priorities here, so that we can elevate it, so that we don't want to thoughtlessly lose other buildings. And if we elevate it, we think that the way the Little Red House is being moved and changed, and the Jim Maul House, we want to have a more conscious effort around those types of structures. So to do that, we have a little subcommittee, Commissioner and Graffia and myself, and we've been meeting with a number of people in the neighborhood. Some of you are here. Bill, we've met with, Betty, Glenn, and we've met with others. And the idea is to kind of hear from the community and elevate the, I want to call it the historic story, in a public way. Use that as a platform, then, to begin to consider how the ordinance might happen. We are also reaching out to other cities that have done this ordinance work, and trying to learn from them. We're very excited to partner with the Historic Society, who is the, you know, the author of the ordinance that we're going to start with. And, you know, our meeting with Glenn and Morales was really great. We're interested in meeting with others. And I guess, so you can comment on it, the thing I'd like the commission to consider is next week, it was Eric's idea to do a panel discussion, and to bring a number of the people that we're talking to in front of everybody and on the public record. We'll ask questions. We'll try to understand the historic nature of different elements. And then we would have a second, I'm calling it an information session. And then we'd have a second one that was more technical. We're thinking the first one might be more about just the romance and charm of the story of Morro Bay. And I'm having really a lot of fun. Well, Joe's always fun, but meeting with, you know, all of you, the stories are incredible. And I'm learning a lot about Morro Bay. And we're thinking that's a way to start. So commissioners, would you like to weigh in on that? Or should we do public comment first on this issue?
Yeah, I think public comment would be good. But is Nancy going to leave? Are you going to leave, Nancy?
No, I'm a full-time block operator now.
Okay, good. I didn't want, I saw you getting-
Did you see that face?
Yeah, no. So good. We're going to have her for a whole meeting. I just want to make sure she's going to be here. So, yeah, Bill, I think it'd be better if we hear from the public first, and then-
Yeah, let's do that.
Let me get it in my ear.
I think that's great. I'm hoping some of you would be willing to step up and say, you know, contribute on this idea, give us ideas, tell us what you think of this initial effort coming from the planning commission. Glenn, would you like to start?
I'm Glenn Silaway. I live in Morro Bay. I'm president of the Historical Society in Morro Bay. And I am so happy that you are supportive of developing an ordinance. As you know, it's, it is part of the general plan that we will do this, becoming certified local government, having an ordinance, having an inventory, having a process to maintain that inventory, constantly evaluating that, educating the public about it, is going to be an important step for us. Why? I was on the general plan advisory committee. And in the beginning of that committee, the first thing we did was try to do a vision statement of Morro Bay. We talked to a lot of people. And I would summarize it by saying, we want Morro Bay to always stay the way it is, only better. And that's, that's the issue we're dealing with. The Historical Society has an informal motto that we are for preservation and progress, because there is no way to do it otherwise. You demonstrated tonight, as Eric's wonderful historical analysis showed, change happens, and it's going to continue to happen.
Aren't those slides fantastic?
Yes. Yes. And we need to be ready to plan for that. So the ordinance is going to be part of that. And I think what it's going to be doing is supporting a general belief in this community that we need to preserve who we are. Our character is embedded in places and in districts and in houses. There are many of them. By themselves, each one is not our character, but together they are. And we need to find, find a way to work with that process and systematically and rationally, without violating anybody's property rights, fix this. And go forward with some certainty on the deal, on the issues you deal with. So, thank you.
Now, and we really appreciate your, you know, you and the Historic Society's leadership on this.
One final point.
Please.
The city is going into its goal-setting process now. You have recommended that this should be a priority. And I want to urge people who think this is important to say so. There will be a public input process on that priority. For the Historical Society, really, it's our number one goal, is to get that done. Because once that's done, then the process will have energy and resources behind it to continue.
And while you're still standing there, so everybody knows, and I'm sure you all do in this room, that's important, because we really want Scott to work on this. And it has to be, it has to be a work priority from the council-
Yes.
-for that to happen.
Yes.
If not, he's, you know, it's 10 items down, and he may not get to it.
And as willing as we might be to do it on our own, it can't get done without that, so.
And we're going to talk about that technically, how we get help, you know, are there grant opportunities for us? And, you know, we're kind of researching some of that now. But thanks, Glenn.
Yeah.
Others? Bill, can I talk into talking?
Okay. Oh, yeah, Bill Martin, Morro Bay again. And I definitely agree. I've seen the Embarcadero go from, you know, the Sylvester's tugs, they had the boatyard on the Embarcadero, they had a lot of the old historical Embarcadero. It's now become, I mean, it just totally lost a lot of its character. The one thing about a lot of ordinances is if they get so onerous, as far as a private property owner, and I've been, I helped found an organization called Pauper, because our property rights behind Cayucus were being violated with an ordinance that just pretty much redlined all of our ranches. So I think when you structure an ordinance- So, I think when you structure an ordinance, I'm all for historical, that's one of my passions, is history, and I've restored several buildings. But in the same breath, I think you have to weigh the balance between private property and historical. Maybe an example is, we just went through two years of trying to get a permit to repair two wooden pilings in the bay. I mean, through all the hoops, with five different agencies, and so, on one hand, I'm all for saving historical, on the other end, I've been through the hurdles and the hoops as a private property owner. So, when I brought up earlier about a piece of city-owned property that I think is really important, and I'm just giving this example, because I think the downtown area and the Embarcadero are the core of, you know, your history, is, this building should be saved, and yet Moro Bay is talking about doing the, I think it's called the Market Plaza, where they're going to totally change the character in the center of town by taking down the old Breakers Building and doing a convention center, you know, tourist kind of hub. So, I think more thought should be put into the downtown area. As far as residential, I know right now it's being proposed as voluntary, and I think that's good, but I'm not sure how you handle that, because I know if you want to save a building, and someone could come in and just totally knock it down. So, that's, I guess it's, I'm rambling on, but I just want to see if anything's put in, that it's more of a balancing act between private property rights, and then also trying to save the really critical historical buildings in the area.
And, you know, I mean, others, of course, share your concern, and that's important to the commission, is, one, you know, how does a preservation ordinance work? There's pluses and minuses.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's the balancing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, on ring one, the main event. This is what I came for tonight. I read something interesting recently, and it was a simple phrase. It said, "The future is crying back to the present, pleading for us to make good decisions."
Yeah, sweet.
Now, we make history every day. The buildings that we design, the buildings we build, will become our history. The buildings that we tear down are lost history. So, one of the things that I think is really important, if we're going to do a work project to form a new commission, and I don't really care what the name of that commission is, but as you experienced in the last two and a half hours, the context of trying to tell an applicant and their neighbors how a building should be designed, painted what color, signs should be what type, what font, how big the numbers ought to be on the building. I spent eight years in the city of San Luis Obispo during one of the greatest growth periods in the city. We were meeting once a week, for, starting at four in the afternoon and going until midnight by agreement, and typically going until one o'clock. We did that four weeks a month, we did about 100 projects a month, and they were all, all, just exactly what you went through. Eight years, I was so exhausted by that, I wasn't sure I was ever going to be able to look at another set of plans. Saturday morning, I'd get this huge pile of documents from the staff, and I had the weekend to go out and drive around, like you did on this one project, typically 10 or 12 projects to review in a weekend, and then be ready to jump into the fray every Monday afternoon, with architects, engineers, planners, applicants, developers, homeowners, neighborhood members who were complaining. But it's a transparent system, and it gives the community a sense that they are participating in the future, just like you saw tonight. This shouldn't, these kinds of events should not be appealed, administrative actions. They should be affirmed early on, through conceptual design, and through the idea that you're going to engage all the parties in a less combative environment than an appeal process. So, if you're going to move forward with a new committee, I would encourage you to empower that committee to both look at the past and the future. And my experience, that that was with the Architectural Review Commission in San Luis, and for the first six years or so, until a historical committee was formed, we handled both, because the majority of the architectural concerns for history come with the demolition of old buildings as a part of new applications. So, it seemed like a logical way to go. Please, let's work on a new commission that handles the past, the present, and builds the future. Thank you.
Beautifully said. And, you know, thank you for all those years on the commission, and they were paying you so much money, it was worth it, so, but...
That's dinner.
Well, that's, that's, that's pretty good, we've never gotten any. But, you know, there's, there's a bunch of us that have done this for a long time, and so we have a real empathy, and, but we also, I think, up here, all of us would agree, we think, we think we play an important part of, you know, kind of bringing this together. So, you know, I think we're all happy to do it, like you were. Thanks.
We're looking at the future.
I think so. Betty, can we talk you into a few words? Oh, you want to talk? Can it be about preservation?
I'm really excited that this is happening. Coming from San Clemente, we lost a lot of beautiful Spanish colonial revival homes in the dead of night. They were demolished. Just incredible, beautiful homes, and that's what started exactly this kind of thing. And they have a very strong Historical Society. There's all kinds of, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, everything's there for us to just grasp, because other people have already gone through it. So, I'm excited, we're thinking about doing this here.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the support.
I think this is great, so, thanks.
Thank you. And you do get an award for staying, you know, extra. Commissioners?
Yeah, Bill, I just want to, Commissioner Ocean, excuse me, or Chair Ocean. I like, I'm a process guy, you know, like Asia said already, she's got a year, and now she's very process-focused, because that's what a planning commission needs to do, you know, or else. So, you, I like the idea of the subcommittee, and Eric's idea of having this panel, so, let's go down that road. So, that's, so would we do the process, would we do the, do this panel, the subcommittee? What I would recommend is that the subcommittee go to the council meeting to set that major priority from the planning commission, and say, "This is our major priority," from the planning commission, one of them. Right now, we know it's one, but there may be another one, housing possibly, I don't know, so I already know.
Let's check out Scott. Scott, are you still there?
Yes, Chair Ocean, I'm still here.
I thought we'd caught him.
You are going at your next meeting to have, we're going to have the goals discussion.
Okay, good. When is that going to be, Scott?
That's going to be at our next meeting, which will be on the, what is it, 21st? So, we'll be having that conversation then. It would have been at this meeting, but I had issues outside of my control and couldn't get staff prepared in time. But we'll be bringing that forward at that next meeting, along with the public benefits discussion, and some of the, like, the conversation you're talking about now, related to historic preservation.
Nice. And we're bringing this forward as part of the overall goal presentation, or as a separate item?
This is going to be part of the overall goal presentation. We're going to get the full list from the commission, and I think we're probably going to have two goals meetings on it. I'm going to give you an overall overview of goals from the city, the entire city, what the goals are that are in place now, and the process that we go through, talk with you about the things that you want to push forward, and depending on how that conversation goes, we may, you know, move that to a second meeting, or if everything's done at the culmination of our next meeting, then that'll be what we forward to the city council as our recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you for your support on this, we really appreciate it.
Can I just clarify something with Scott, too?
Please.
Scott, you know, I did talk to the mayor about this a little bit, but she seems to show an interest in this, so would it be beneficial for us to go to the council to present it personally, as a subcommittee or the planning commission, you know, as a major priority? Because the longer we wait, the more history we're losing by the day, literally. We lost two homes, so would that be beneficial? When would that happen? When would that happen?
So, we are putting that timeline together right now. As you're probably aware, our city manager, Scott Collins, will be leaving the city. His last day is March 1st, so the timeline is a little bit up in the air right now, depending on who we get as the interim, and how we do that, we're still trying to figure that out right now. But we should, I should have an answer for you by the next meeting, about what that'll look like, and whether the council's going to be meeting with the individual advisory bodies, or maybe just meeting with the chair and their liaison, which is me, for the planning commission. And that might be how we present the information to council. It's yet to be determined, though, and I should have an answer for you as part of the presentation I give you at our next meeting.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. Eric, thoughts on this approach?
First off, I'd just like to let the letter writers know that we did receive two letters on this subject, one from Sean Green and one from Susan Stewart. And Sean Green's letter was, I thought, well, he spoke well, and I agree with things he was speaking of there. And after, in the past, I've discussed whether preservation should be sort of a mandatory-driven thing by the, by us and a committee, and/or whether it should be voluntary, and I've heard speakers tonight speak about voluntary, because mandatory starts talking about property rights issues, and there's, that's a deep discussion that needs to be had, but I think there's very valid arguments about that subject, and I'm, I'm ready to stand in front of the council, if you want to stand in front of the council.
Love it. Asia.
Yeah. So, you guys are talking about having a panel discussion to kind of launch...
In our next meeting.
In our next meeting, as a goal-setting session? Sound like?
I think it's specifically trying to raise awareness and create focus from the commission's standpoint, to begin to publicly discuss how we do this.
And that panel would be external, like, non-commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that's a great start. I have this discussion, while I know it's, like, obviously so important, historic preservation, we as a commission just need tools to deal with it, and to make good decisions in this town. It also raises a lot of red flags for me, mostly because I've lived in places where historic preservation is really weaponized in an ugly way. And so, I feel like I can support, I definitely want to support the effort to pursue, especially this, like, this balanced preservation and progress perspective that the public spoke on. If we're going to have a panel, I just really want to advocate for a diverse panel of residents that represent all different actors in town, you know? We tend to get really insightful input from the same group of people at our meetings, and it'd be really great to figure out, and maybe this is on us a little bit, but figure out how to get additional...
You want us to make new friends?
Yeah, you know, I think, I said this at our interview for the planning commission, I'm really trying to figure out if it's possible for young families to live in Moro Bay. And I'm not convinced that it is yet. I'm not sure how to make that work, and I want historic preservation to be something that can help that process, not just young families, but diverse families, and families of different incomes, single people, older people. And I think there is a way for historic preservation to help us reach that goal as well. I just, in, you know, some initial searches, there are guidelines and policy recommendations from, like, Housing and Urban Development, from the state of California's Housing Department and Agency, on how to integrate historic preservation, and with things like affordable housing, and, you know, other equity-based efforts in a town, and I just hope that, and I want to push us to have that on our forefront of our minds while we pursue what has been used in other places, bigger cities, in ways that can be detrimental to marginalized communities.
So, would you be willing to offer a couple of examples? I've talked about this with Scott. Scott, wake up. Do you have any ideas about how to, how to pursue that?
I haven't given it a tremendous amount of thought to this point. I kind of thought, you know, once we get the thumbs up to move this forward by the city council, we'll get some direction from them, and I think that starts to, you know, shape what our outreach looks like. I think we're going to get some pretty specific direction from council on that, and whether that's, we form a larger committee that's made up of stakeholders, various stakeholders, including folks with diverse backgrounds, things like that, I think that's definitely a possibility. Or that gets incorporated, you know, into the directions provided by council and how we do outreach, I think it just sort of depends, I'm not sure we're totally there yet, because we haven't been given that specific direction by council yet. So, to do it more in the near term, related to what you were talking about, Chair Ocean, I would have to think about that a little bit more, like, for our next meeting, like, how we would do that.
And I think right now, the way I'm hearing Asia talk about it, it's just to get it on the table?
Yes, yes.
And to consider it, so it's, you know, how does it fit? How does it work? And I have seen a lot of pretty interesting projects around that. So, it's, I think it's, I like it, I like including it.
I think to clarify, that the panel discussion isn't so much about people recommending ideas for exactly how to proceed with this process, it's mostly, in my mind, anyway, about just exploring the various histories of Moro Bay that may not be well seen, and there's a number of members of this community that do not come to these meetings, that have tremendous history here. There's native Salinian Indians here with tremendous history, that have wonderful stories, and we have a gentleman really interested in the navy and military history of Moro Bay, which is why we have our harbor and our breakwaters, and why there's a route to the rock now, and it's why the city became a fishing village later. So, those kinds of histories are really important to hear, and just having those little discussions in this forum, sort of panel setting, kind of just states that we are interested in doing this, and, public, if you're interested, come on down, and let's, let's figure out what this community wants to be.
Yeah, beautifully said, and I do think we're planning another hour session that would be more technical, and that might be where the affordable housing issue could be explored.
But even, even just making sure, when we're hearing those histories, that those histories that you just mentioned are included, right, that we are hearing those for general awareness from the beginning, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. Joe, you get the last word, and we want to get out of here before nine.
I'll be brief for once. Well, this is, this is very exciting. I embrace everything that I've heard you folks say, it's really exciting. And I think it would be really powerful for several of us, or all of us, to advocate in front of the city council in person. And following what Asia's saying, you know, inevitably, when you have a good idea, and this is a very good idea, we have to give an enormous amount of attention to all the unintended bad consequences that might derive from our advocacy of a very good idea. You know, and in ending, I'll just say, you know, we, we have a responsibility to preserve the historical legacy for generations not yet born. Simple as that.
Beautiful. Thank you, guys. No other discussion, I'd like to wrap this up.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, Glenn.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if you go forward with this panel idea, I don't know if you're talking about doing that during a regular planning commission meeting, is that what your idea is?
We're going to take an hour in the next meeting.
So, we know the schedule, okay, because we can tell people about it, and get your audience out there.
Let's see if we can get some names and get you some information this week. Yeah, thank you for that offer. I guess the, we've got commissioner comments and agenda items, I just wanted to announce to everybody that not only is this really a good group, but we're all going to do, we've all committed to do a training, the ABCs of how to be good planning commissioners, which is another day of our lives, like, Terry's probably teaching it.
I'm a parliamentarian, I'm happy to help you with the points of order, if it comes to that. And on that line, point of order on your suggestion, that more than two of you appear before the... before the city council, you'll be in a serious Brown Act situation unless you notice that. So, there's nothing wrong with you having a joint session with both your commission and the council, but if you go more than two public officials like yourselves appearing together to make a presentation to the city council, you will have a serious Brown Act...
Well, we were planning on two, but we could make a bigger splash. Scott, what does it take to notice it?
Well, it would have to, it would take the acquiescence of the city council. So that's why I said, I'll have more information about like how we're going to do this process and how it'll interact with the council.
It would be a first, so. And the other thing...
...appear as residents.
We have had joint meetings in the past, so that's not, that's not something that's off the table.
And the other thing, just to, we get back to what Terry's saying, I will be there in the audience, the subcommittee will be representing the Planning Commission, I'm just going to shut my mouth and, and watch it happen, okay? But they'll see me. So that's, that's the way to do it too.
Well, I think we're allowed as residents to comment as long as we stipulate that it's outside the planning...
So, we're not, yeah. So just in case, we don't want to get too caught up in that because I wanted to see it happen with the subcommittee anyway.
Any other comments?
Bill, the only thing I wanted to bring up too, because next, our next meeting's going to be exciting meeting because we're going to also talk about our community benefits, public benefits memo. So read the memo. You've got to read the memo because Sean Green will be coming back. This is Community Benefits or Public Benefits 2, our second presentation. We need to move this quickly.
So everybody has to come to this next meeting. Sean's going to be there, Glenn's going to be there, Terry's going to be there, Bill's going to be there? Yeah?
But, but, but what I want to emphasize...
Nancy might not be there, no.
But, but the only thing I really want to emphasize because it's, it's very important is the memo's not short. You can't, it's not a two or three-page memo, it's a pretty intense memo, but it's got a lot of good information in there.
We promise.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Scott, I'm sure you have lots to say. Any final comments?
Thank you, Chair Oshin. Other than to say that that's, that those are the conversations we're going to have at the next meeting is the, is the goals, the panel for the historic preservation discussion and then the public benefits item. Those will all be on there. The panel will be first because we want to like take advantage of those folks, not make them wait, that type of thing, so.
Wonderful. Feel better, thank you so much for being with us. We thank Nancy for staying late and we welcome Eric and so happy to have you. And with that, we're going to adjourn Eric's first meeting.
Thanks, everybody.